Hi, everybody. I'm Melinda Gallant and I want to welcome you to another Cape Conversations. Oh, we've got a good one today. It's all about the town meeting this month. And it's going to be very important that you attend it. So come along. Let's have another Cape Conversations. Hi, everybody. I'm Melinda Gallant and I am so excited to be sitting with probably two of my favorite town employees, people of the town, town mothers, fathers, whatever you want to call them. I'm with Heather, who is the Assistant Town Administrator, correct?
We're now Town Managers.
Oh, why did I say?
The charter gave us that authority.
Oh, that's right, like 100 years ago.
Yes.
And I'm also with Leanne. And Leanne, you are the, get it straight for me.
Absolutely. I'm the Director of Community Development.
Right, Director of Community Development. We've talked before.
We have, yes. Thanks for having us.
And you have that Irish lilt, which is so beautiful. So don't worry, Heather, I will talk to you, but I gotta hear the Irish lilt a little bit.
I love listening to Leanne as well.
Good. So we are here today, though, seriously, we're here to talk about a serious subject. And it's about the community and it's about our town meeting. So who wants to start with talking about the town meeting?
Maybe I'll start. I think the first bit of information is to know when it is.
Well, that's a good thing.
So we'll be convening on Monday, November 17th at the Sandwich Middle High School at 7:00 PM. And we encourage people to show up just a little bit early to get signed in and get their favorite seat in the auditorium. But we'll have, you know, the regular procession. We have some special treats for the beginning of the meeting. With the town moderator has planned, so maybe it's just a little bit different in terms of the sort of the inauguration of the meeting. So that should be fun. And it's a meeting that we always look forward to, I can tell you, and I know Leanne will talk a little bit about this too, that we both really love the town meeting form of government, that this form particularly in Sandwich being an open town meeting means that any member of the community can, so long as a registered voter can come and vote at town meeting. And that is a really special thing that I think, you know, we were often reminded of. And whenever I'm outside of the state of Massachusetts, I think a lot about how special this form of government is. And when you tell your colleagues who work in other states that you get together at least twice a year with between 300 and 1,000 residents and vote on the most important matters facing the community, they honestly, their jaws drop. They can't believe we have that relationship with the town, that we have the opportunity to do that.
That's great, yeah.
So it is a very special thing and a special opportunity for the community to weigh in.
Well, I moved here from Ohio 45 years ago. And I will tell you, it was culture shock. And I went to my very first town meeting. I wanted to go, you know, and be a part of it. And watching all the residents who then had lived here 45 years get up and give their opinions. I think the only thing that we probably should address, though, is to have 300 people decide for a town of 20,000, is not what we have, 21,000 now, something like that. You know, don't complain if you don't go. That's the way I look at it. And I don't always go. I watch it on as Sandwich Community Television, though, and I yell at the television.
I have to believe that if something that you felt passionately about.
Oh, I do.
Trust your neighbors or the elected officials to make the right decision, that you would be there.
Right.
And I think a lot of this really does rely on trusting the community, trusting your neighbors who show up to make the right judgment. And then, you know, to trust all of us to carry out the will of the town. And so we take that all very seriously. We're not necessarily serious people all the time, but we take the role that we have, you know, it's a very important task that we're carrying out the will of the community.
Well, here, people are talking about right now, they're talking about democracy, you know, is democracy dead? Is it going away in other countries, here in the United States? Whatever your persuasion is, there's a lot of discussion about it. Well, this is about the simplest and most honest form of democracy you can have.
It's the closest you get to the community in any form of government.
Yeah.
This is real democracy happening. We do it on a daily, on a weekly basis. And the community has extraordinary access to local officials, to elected officials, to decision-making.
Sure.
We certainly can continue to work harder on making sure the community feels like they have access to that. But even doing things like this and talking with you and making sure the community knows that, you know, we are here to carry out the decision-making of the community.
What, so who is the town moderator now?
Sean Roush.
Sean, right. And he's already done one meeting, right?
I think he's done two.
Oh, it's two, okay.
He had a very challenging one, unfortunately, when our former select board member passed away. And so he presided over that meeting.
Yeah.
And then came and did another one, did an excellent job in carrying on the strong tradition of having a well-run town meeting.
That, and which is, that's what, it's all about Robert's Rules of Order, right? I mean, basically, that's it. So, so Leanne, you're sitting here because you do the development for the town, right?
Yeah, I work with a team for land use based policies and bylaws.
Right. So where are we with that? Is that something special coming up as part of this town meeting?
Yeah, there's a number of zoning bylaw amendments and a number of town bylaw amendments that we're putting forward. So, you know, to go back a little bit in the process, we worked with the planning board throughout the summer to prioritize certain issues that have come up through, you know, plan development, housing production plan, master planning for our tenure visioning plan or the selectman's long-range plan. We've been looking at those issues and the board identified several for us to continue with. So we've had multiple public hearings, public engagement, community engagement. And then what we're presenting is, I think, about six or seven land use amendments before town meeting.
Is there one there that's more important than the other?
You know, that's a question I get asked a lot, which one's my favorite. They all are important for different reasons. One of the ones that is a standout for me is the short-term rental issue.
You mean Airbnb's and those people?
Yes, yes.
That live in my neighborhood, or should I say, don't live in my neighborhood?
It's a hot topic. And in a community such as ours, which, you know, has traditionally held that use and traditionally has had the opportunity to be able to, you know, afford their homes by renting their homes for periods of the year. It is a huge concern of ours that it is not referenced anywhere in any of our land use codes, but that is an allowable use. So we'd previously gone to town meeting back in May and some of the regulations were just maybe a little out of whack with what the community wanted. So we undertook the initiative again to speak with community members. And, you know, I think a lower level of regulations is what we're proposing right now. Very basic safety regulations, registration and inspections.
Sure.
That's part of the building code. That's something that's already being done. We've already inspected 250 properties. We have another 250 to go. But I think overall, what we're presenting is an opportunity to have homeowners, residents, business owners be allowed to continue to rent their property.
Certainly.
So that they, that there is no legal issues that arise in the future that we've seen in other communities.
I, for me who lives, I live in Town Neck. And in Town Neck, on my street, there are seven Airbnb's. Those people do not live in the community. They live somewhere else. The ones across the street, I love the people. The people next door to them, very nice people. The people down below me, nice people. They're all nice people.
Yeah.
I have nothing against them. And God love them, they came in during COVID and fixed up these houses and made my property worth a lot more money than it ever was before.
Yeah.
So all good. What bothers me is because they don't live here, they have no sense of community. So the people that rent go to the treehouse. And I think that, and trust me, I love the treehouse, both to go to and because of the business it brings here, as I do, as I love Fisherman's View and the Pilot House and all these different wonderful restaurants, which I'm so lucky are within walking distance of me. And let alone the little shops that we have here. But again, there's no sense of, they have no tie-in to the community. So they don't, they vote somewhere else.
Yep.
And they don't, they don't care what happens at the high school. Do you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And that's what, that's my only concern. I have no other concerns. I have no complaints because everybody in my neighborhood, we haven't had any issues on our street or around me with those, the folks that rent, because they're good people too, you know? They're just trying to have fun.
And I think what you're touching on is like the, it's the social issues and the social aspect of the use itself, right? So as we go through this process, it's expressly allow, and then it's have another community engagement process about what do we want this use to look like in the future?
Right.
So we've, we're actually quite lucky. We've been maintaining a list from, you know, those that pay taxes to the Department of Revenue for the state, for all of these short-term rental uses. We're able to see who owns them. Are they residents of Sandwich? Are they second homeowners? Are they corporations? We have very few corporations that own multiple homes here that are renting for this use.
Right.
Most are either primary or secondary homeowners. So I think it must be more of a large quantity in your neighborhood of second homeowners that may not reside here that are renting for.
I mean, they live out of state, most of them.
I would say what's important for this town meeting, and we're taking, you know, very measured steps. And we heard really clearly from the last town meeting vocally from both people that are community members that either rent out their own home for short-term or own second properties that they rent out and allows them to be active community.
And allow them to continue to live at Sandwich.
And we heard really loudly from them that the level of regulation that we were offering or proposing at the time was something they felt they couldn't live with. So we came back and really to Leanne and the planning board's credit, reached out to all of those folks, worked with them over, and this is governance, right, over the course of many months.
That's what you're supposed to do.
Yes, over many months and said, okay, what can, what do we recommend as a first step? So the first step is essentially to allow the use as a use that's allowed within the community with very clear regulations for basically human habitation.
Right.
To make sure it's safe, because we all know and have heard the stories of, you know, the Airbnb's being locations where there have been fires and high risk. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen in our community. We'll definitely be looking over time. And again, land use policy is long-range. It is not a short-term.
Well, it's ever, it's ever changing. It's like everything else. As times change, so does that, you know?
So I think the things that you're raising, you know, we certainly hope that Sandwich doesn't continue to go the way of the rest of the Cape and become more seasonal, but we certainly are seeing the potential for that trend that we are, have always been sort of the strongest year-round community. And it's what brings this community so close together. And I think it's been a very cohesive decision-making for the community for the most part, that as we become more seasonal, I think we'll see more dialogue about what that means for us. And some of the other things that Leanne will be working on and presenting at this town meeting relate to how we make this community more of a year-round community. How do we ensure that property owners have more rights on their own property in a way that's cohesive with the community?
Sure. So how does that work?
Yeah, so we were undertaking two housing zoning bylaws to present to town meeting. So the first one is another development of the accessory dwelling unit bylaws. You may remember that at the previous town meeting, we had adopted the state's version mandated to do so.
Right.
We created a smaller unit. It was actually more restrictive than what we currently had had on the books.
Oh, wow.
So the planning board underwent another community outreach session this summer. And we decided to put forward an expanded accessory dwelling unit, an EADU.
What do you mean?
Which means that you would be allowed to have a larger size accessory dwelling unit. So it's.
Bigger than a tiny house?
Yes, yes, actually a lot bigger than a tiny house.
Okay.
So 80% of the gross floor area of your home, as opposed to 50%, which is the protected use version, and up to 1,500 square feet, which really is, you know, the size of a home.
The right-sized lot.
Correct. You would have to have 40,000 square feet to be able to do so. Because they were trying to balance, you know, neighborhoods, traffic, any septic issues, but also allow people to age in place if there's any accessibility or mobility issues that they needed, something that had, you know, could be wheelchair adapted.
Right.
It also encourages families to stay here and create more of that family compound situation.
And I think those were really wise thoughts that the planning board and the staff had. We're thinking about having units that were of a size or allowing them that you could have support staff living in the home along with the individual, because we all know that's part of aging in place. And then the accessibility issues, we heard a little bit about at the last town meeting, that the ADU wasn't large enough to accommodate hallways and bathrooms and storage that you might need.
And sometimes even bedrooms when they're up, you know?
Yes, exactly. And then the second article, as it relates to housing, is completely redoing our affordable housing bylaws. So we previously had an affordable housing conditional density development, which is a mouthful.
Yes.
Streamlined it.
Say that one more time.
Yeah, I don't know if I can do that fast, but streamlined it to just an affordable housing bylaw. You know, has more local control. It slightly mimics Chapter 40B, but at a scale and density that's appropriate for Sandwich with a lot more control over what that development would look like.
Right.
So it's kind of trying to give people another avenue for, you know, getting a little bit of a denser development, but while also keeping it very sandwich. So we did a survey of all the properties in town. We looked at densities that work. We looked at the cottage colonies. We looked at neighborhoods that would have been on, you know, a smaller sized lot. And the planning board felt very comfortable to go forward with a pocket neighborhood concept.
Oh.
Whereby you would have 10,000 square foot lots, which, that think of your captains and scortin shores. All those homes would be on 10,000 square foot lots, where you'd be able to have something like that, maybe utilize shared driveways, have 25% of affordability mix in among the market rate units. And then as a second piece to that bylaw, have, allow adaptive reuse, which is essentially taking an existing structure and changing the use of the structure into housing. Wing School is a great adaptive reuse project. They built that building. They made it affordable housing for seniors. And, you know, we have multiple opportunities in town. We have a lot of underutilized, underutilized commercial space that could be adapted into housing, but there's no mechanism currently to do so.
I see.
And think about that, the Wing School required state legislation or legislative to do that. By state legislation, I mean Chapter 40.
Right, sorry.
The zoning authority outside of the town of Sandwich to accomplish that project. This allows some things to happen. And I'll use the term by right, but by special permit, so that there will be some review process around those.
Yep.
But they're consistent. And I think it's really important to note on the compact development for the.
Pocket neighborhood.
Pocket neighborhood, which I'm watching go up now in the area, which is, it fits right in.
There, where?
It's not in this town. It's in another community. But it's a lot that's been vacant for a very long time, backing up to a residential area and surrounded by commercial. But it didn't meet the needs of the commercial environment. But you see now five homes going on, what looks to be a little bit more than acre of land. It fits right in. It's consistent with the character of the area. And it isn't that the planning board is recommending a large area of 10,000 square foot lots, but where appropriate or infill supportive, that can happen. And that kind of slow redevelopment and infill development is exactly what the plan is.
And are those condos or are those considered apartments?
I think the form of tenure is up to the developer.
It is, yeah. So municipality can't actually mandate whether something be condoed. The bylaw itself, we say rental or homeownership. The bylaw would not allow for apartment buildings unless the building already exists.
I see.
So it's the smaller, you know, cottage colony style development, smaller home development. Yeah, not quite as small as tiny homes, but it's just that feel. We did do a development scheduling for us, which basically means we only will give out a certain amount of permits a year for us. So it really is a slow transition, you know, a little bit more density than what we're used to, but definitely not high density by any means.
Right.
And, you know, as it kind of goes across the town.
I just, I used to work for Mashpee Commons, which most people know. And I just saw Buff Chase, actually, we had lunch together not too long ago. And he was talking to me, asking me about what was going on in Sandwich. He always asks what was going on. He goes, well, they're putting up, you know, they put up some units in Sandwich. I saw that. And I said, yeah, and it's great, you know? I said, I personally wouldn't want to live there at this age because I need outdoor space and there isn't any outdoor space there. It's all interior, which is great. There are apartments. It's perfect. And if you don't want to, if you want to have communal space, it works perfectly for you. I wouldn't want that. So he was talking about, and they do it in Germany, and it's, they're called widows' homes or widower homes. And they're, and I always use the term tiny house, but they're small houses.
Yeah.
On, and now I think they're also doing it out in Oregon and in Washington State, where they put these tiny homes around, you know, a central park area or a municipal garden or green space with porches facing the green space and entry through the back where you would have your cars or what have you. And that's what, he wants to do that at Mashpee Commons. He says, we're not quite there yet. And, you know, oh, there's problems with the town, you know? You know?
It's a really lovely model. And I think anyone that's from Europe or has been there or in the Sordish Isles knows that Olmsted form of like compact development on shared open space is a really common theme.
You do it in Valma.
There's, yeah.
Yeah, there is. I mean, I think even some of your housing authority has, off of 28, I think there's a group of smaller shingled little buildings, little homes, kind of like apartments, not.
Yes, there are two.
Yeah.
It is not, this is not, we're not breaking new ground here in the town of Sandwich. Yeah, these are pretty common.
No, but we should accept it, though. It's been done, people. Go and vote.
Interestingly, this is a little factoid that has really always stuck with me for a while is that Sandwich has the most uniform housing stock of any town on Cape Cod. The single-family home on a larger lot and home size in Sandwich is larger than most other communities.
Right.
So we really have a very flat kind of tenure form of housing supply in Sandwich. And so creating more diversity of the type of units that are available, the way that they look, that will actually increase, you know, the diversity of folks that are here, income diversity, age diversity, you know, any type of diversity you may think of. So those things all create a stronger community. And so some of these are just really fundamental to who we are as a community in the long term. And really valuable work that's being done, which is why we need you to come to town meeting.
That, everybody hear that? They need you to come to town meeting. So, so what other forms of land management do you have, which is the wrong term?
Yeah, sure. One of the, one of the town bylaw amendments is actually related to the sign code. So the sign code has not actually been updated really much since its inception, bar a few words here or there. Signs are, you know, notoriously difficult to regulate because the First Amendment writes.
Yes.
So we really.
But you've always put, it had to be, a long time ago, it had to be wood and it had to be hand carved.
Yes, and those were existing regulations that, you know, were approved in the 70s.
Yes.
We never changed them because it got harder and harder to regulate signs because of First Amendment rights. So what we did is we took the existing bylaw and we changed it from a content-based bylaw to a design bylaw. So you can say whatever you wish, but it has to look like this, yes.
Yeah.
But we did it in consultation with the business community who felt that they really needed to be able to create more of a place where they were.
Sure.
That, you know, some of them are on strips where there's high traffic or there's large volumes of traffic. And they just felt that it was very difficult for people to understand that they were there.
Yeah.
So what we did is, they're very fair regulations, larger signs, uniform signs. But we also tried to take an effort to maybe reduce some of the sign pollution. So maybe there wouldn't be seven or eight sandwich boards associated with that business.
Right.
It'd be more uniform, but you would be able to have a larger sign, several more signs, you know, one on the building, one outside the building, one on the side of the street.
Right.
That currently wasn't, was not allowed in this code.
Wow. But people were doing it.
Yes, and that gets into the violations.
And that gets into the building department. They have to go out and inspect and that can be crazy.
And it just, there was this balance of unfairness that's being felt with the business community of, you know, I'm following the rules and regulations, but then the business beside me is not. And, you know, every day they're putting out more and more signs and, you know, we want this all to be fair. So we said, you know what, let's try and make these regulations more equitable for everyone. And then it's just an opportunity for them to have their opinion voiced at town meeting as to this and that, you know, it will be enforced for everyone.
Does it include neon or not?
No neon signs are allowed.
No.
They never have been.
No, I know that. I'm just asking, you know?
Yes, no neon signs, no flashing, oscalating signs. So a lot of the prohibitions that we used to have is still in here as it relates to that style of signage. But we do allow for the larger signs, composite materials, doesn't have to be wood, but should mimic wood.
Right.
Within the historic district, of course, there's their own permitting process through that.
Yes, I knew that. Yes, yep.
I want to go off the rails a little bit here and just recognize the amount and volume of work that's land use related that's on this town meeting warrant. It's almost exclusively sort of a land use and regulatory town meeting.
Which is good.
It is really good. And you can see the work and thought that's gone into it and think about this since the May town meeting. All of these bylaws have been proposed, generated, drafted, evaluated, had citizen engagement to the point of personal phone calls, many of them, small group meetings. And I think that really is a reflection of some of the organizational changes that we've made by creating a Department of Community Development where Leanne is the director of that department and have multiple staff that report to her, allows the delegation of some of the responsibilities, but also lands that land use acumen with the lead of that department. And I think this just really demonstrates how much more effective we can be when we have the right staff and organizational structure in place. So this is my thank you, my thank you to the town and to the town manager for having the flexibility and creating that. And hopefully we can do a little bit more of that. We should have Guy Boucher, the Director of Operations for Community Services, come in at some point. But we've seen really strong.
A lot of questions for him.
Good. But you do. He's a great person.
No, he's wonderful. I sat on that committee for a short period of time because I just didn't have time to do it.
Yeah, so it just is a recognition of the, and it isn't, it isn't just Leanne's work. It's the work of all the department has that work with her that gives them, frees them up to really liberate them to do some of the hard work that needs to happen and support the boards and committees that make the recommendations.
So everybody looks at the fall town meeting, which is what I'm calling it, although I guess it is fall still.
Yep.
Yeah, it's fall till, what, December something?
Yeah.
As, oh, yeah, it's the fall town meeting. It's not like it's, oh, we got to go to the spring one because that's, you know, where all the meaty things happen. But this one sounds like it has a lot of things on the warrant that are important and that will actually affect your neighbor and you, you know what I'm saying?
I just come from the standpoint and principle that land use decisions, whether it's purchasing open space.
Right.
Creating the regulatory scheme that allows development to occur or not to occur has far more long-term impact on the fiscal health of a community than what your current annual operating budget is.
Right.
You know, the operating budget is what it takes to deliver services, how you distribute those expenses and how they're supported in the community and who can support them is really, the land use decisions are the foundation for that.
So all of the, how many land use provisions are there in this warrant?
Six.
Six. So there's that. Is there anything else in the warrant besides that, or is this all we're talking about?
There are a couple of others. And I think one you'll think is very interesting. And we won't hit all of the articles. Some of them are more.
How many articles are there?
There's 11.
Without many, really?
No, no, I'm sorry. It's seven, seven are. Seven are, three are not. Two of those that are not are related to traffic safety, which we know is a really important issue for the community and a very difficult one because it's one of those, the problem is us issues, right?
I know.
It's the drivers in our community, which is mostly us.
Well, they're trying to take a, get a handle on it in Town Neck, you know, the signs around and whatever. But when there are sidewalks, you know, people walk in the street.
Again, this is another kind of citizens' action that's resulting in a legislative proposal to the town meeting to create two different things and to accept the authority to create thickly settled zones and to authorize safety zones.
It makes sense.
Yes, and both of those, I think we just want to give guidance that this gives the select board the authority to create them.
Yeah.
The Department of Transportation will be giving, are in fact in the process of developing regulations for them.
Oh, great.
So the types of tool that we want to be discreet in how we use them.
Yeah.
So they can be, they can be effective.
Sure.
So we'll be cautious about how we implement them, but it does give us another tool in the toolbox. In addition to the signs and the regulatory, there's some special designations for unique areas that really relate, at least on the safety zones, relate to land uses. We're back to land use.
There we go. It's all tied down.
Tied together. So those are two that are interesting as well.
Well, it's kind of interesting to me, again, the word thickly settled in Sandwich Police give our visitors here such a joy when they see the patrol cars that say Sandwich Police.
Yes.
And also the thickly settled signs. I've had more people ask me about the thickly settled signs. It's crazy. I mean, you know, why does, what does that mean, thickly settled? I said, well, there's a lot of people live there.
And there is a legal definition to that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there's what?
A legal definition. So you have to have a population density to have.
Oh, is that right? Oh, there you go. Well, Town Neck's thickly settled. The sign is you enter in Town Neck Road, there's a sign that says that. Well, I can't believe it. How fast this went.
Always.
Too fast, too fast. Please come back to Cape Conversations. I know you're doing your kind of, you've got a thing going and you're talking to town people and the station is as well, Sandwich Community Television is as well. But I love having you here, so don't forget me.
We will not. We love having a conversation. It is really the best way to communicate. And Leanne and I are happy to come back anytime you wish.
Well, and I try not to ask you those, you know, those icky questions, but.
You can, you can hit the hard ones at us if you want to.
Well, so far, so good. You're doing well. So thank you again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks so much.
Heather Harper and Leanne Drake, two wonderful town employees that are working hard to make our town a better place to live. You should go talk to them. You should go to town meeting for sure. You should go to town meeting for sure, which is on November 17th at 7:00 and get there early so you can get checked in. It is going to be very important because it's land use issues. And land use issues affect everybody in the community. So I think it's wonderful. They're here today talking with us and I hope you'll go see them at town meeting. So thank you for joining me today and I will see you again on another Cape Cod Conversations.